Tonight of the regular meeting of Alexander County Board of Commissioners, the regular meeting of January the 7th. If everyone would please stand, the invocation is going to be delivered by Commissioner Darrell Robertson and I will do the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow. Heavenly fathers, we pause at the beginning of this new year, we would ask that we might have time and opportunity to be thankful for the blessings that were ours during the past year. So often we concentrate on the problems and aggravations and the things that happen in life that we forget that we're truly blessed people living in a blessed nation. Fathers, we pause this evening, we'd ask that we might have your wisdom and guidance as we proceed with this meeting, that the decisions that are made here might be for the benefit of the citizens of Alexander County. Father, at the beginning of this new year, we're also having new legislators installed in Raleigh and Washington, and we would ask that they might have the wisdom and the guidance and the character to govern this nation, this government that was created by the people, of the people, and for the people. Father, we pray that our country might return to the values and strengths that made us the great nation that we are. Father, we pray that your protection might be with those who are in service to the citizens of this country, whether in Alexander County, in this state, in this nation, or around the world, we pray that your protection might be with each one. Father, we pray now that you would be with each one here, may we have your protection as we travel from this place home. And Father, we would ask that in the year 2013, Alexander County might truly experience your blessings. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
My man. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next.
Commissioners' report first.
Yeah. The next item on the agenda is the Commissioners' report. I'll make a motion that we adopt the Commissioners' report. You have a second?
My second.
Next thing is the adoption of the agenda.
Need to vote on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes, excuse me. This is my first meeting, so I had to bear with me.
And you're not making him the least bit nervous.
No, no, no. Believe it or not, I'm not nervous. It's just my first meeting and I have to, you know, remember where I am. So the next thing is to vote. All in favor of the Commissioners' report? Raise your right hand. Anybody opposed? No. Next thing is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have your motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we adopt the agenda as presented in our packet.
My second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Raise your right hand. All opposed? No. Agenda's adopted. Beginning of the agenda is the public comment period, and we have two people, I believe, Jamie signed up for comment. The first person I'd like to recognize is Captain Mike Harrison with his Alexander County Sheriff's Department. Mike, if you'd step up to the podium.
He's on the agenda.
Okay.
If this...
Excuse me.
Did you sign up?
No, sir, I didn't realize that I needed to do that. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Beber family.
Well, typically what we do is you need to sign up to speak, and Mike Harrison has signed up to speak for the, I guess, for the monument or for the renaming of the...
Mr. Chairman, Mike is number two on our agenda, unless he's got something he's wanting to add, public comment. Okay. Do you have anybody else?
Yes, I do. Justin Deal? You here?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest we let this lady speak after Justin.
That's fine. Justin, if you'll step to the podium, say your name and what you're here for.
Justin Deal. And I'd like to address the Commission Board this evening about a concern that I think I can speak for Alexander County as a whole of what is being done concerning the safety of our children and our school system. I think it's a legitimate concern across the board, tending back to the tragedy that happened back in the 14th of December in Connecticut. So I have a question that I'm going to present to you as a board, and asking, what is our county commissioners', what is your plan? What are we doing in trying to place something into making our schools safer, making sure that our kids are safe, making sure that something like these is not going to happen here? I've done some research, and I know that no one person has the answer. It's going to take a group effort of all of our resources that we can pull together. And I know the sheriff has a legitimate concern for our county as a whole. I know that for a fact, and I know he's got a passion to make sure that our children are safe. And I know after these incidents happened, from the day after that happened up until the kids got out of school for Christmas break, there was officers present at each school, no matter if it was elementary or schools that already had resource officers, and I appreciate that. But the sheriff does not have the staff to provide that. He was using some detectives and people stepping out of their normal duties to be there for a presence. I know I don't have an answer, but I think it's something that needs to be researched, something that needs to be addressed, something that doesn't need to fall between the cracks because I've got children in the school here. I've got a child that goes to school, and I don't want like anything to happen. I mean, she's scared to go to school, along with a lot of other kids. These kids still going to school today crying because they're scared to go to school. So it's affecting their education. So, you know, there's something at hand to all of us is, you know, we'll have to come together and see what the answer is. And I have done some research, and there is some federal funding for school resource officers. It's something that I looked into myself. I can't do the preliminary work on it, and I challenge y'all to look into it. That's what I'm here now to do, is to challenge you as the Commission Board, where do we need to go from here to get the sheriff what he needs to make sure that our kids are safe? And I know it's going to cost money. There's no doubt about it. It's not something that's going to be free. But I do know that there is some implementations from the federal government that's being put in place, that has been in place actually since the Columbine incident back in 99. And there's lots of federal money and federal grants out there. I've been involved in emergency services in this county since 1992. So I've walked this field. I know where we're at. I've trained with these guys, I've been with them, and I know their heart, I know their passion, but they need help, just as much as all of us do. And I've got a concern, and I think I can speak for the majority of Alexander County who has children in the school system, and not just children, but family members that work there, that teach there. I mean, you know, we've got a concern. Nobody in Newtown, Connecticut, ever thought that would happen there. But we can't get complacent in saying that it won't happen here. Pre-planning is one thing that we can do, and I'm sure some stuff's been going on, but I'd like to know, you know, find out what we can do, and I'd like to know that something's being done for the safety of our children. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Young lady, if you'd like to step forward and state your name.
Hi, I'm Patricia Beber-Dagan-Hart. And first off, I would like to apologize because this is my first meeting as well and not knowing your protocol. But anyway, I had a couple of things that I've been hearing, that the commissioners, that you're opposed of naming the county building after someone, as you're afraid that it would be, open up a floodgate of requests. And I also understand that this facility was also ordered by a Superior Court judge and not an undertaking that would have occurred otherwise. But anyway, tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Beber family and requesting that our new law enforcement center be named after my grandfather, the late Sheriff Elisha Beber. In June of 1959, he was shot in the back and killed while investigating an domestic dispute. In 166 years of Alexander County history, this is to my knowledge, he has been, and hopefully, the only county employee ever killed while in the line of duty. Not only did he sacrifice his life for our county, but his wife, his children, his grandchildren made sacrifices as well by not knowing him, and by not having him in our lives. So do you have any idea what an honor that it would be for me and my family to have this law enforcement named for his legacy? And recently, though, I did have the opportunity to attend the open house at the law enforcement center, which is just unbelievable, something that really grateful that our county has, that our sheriff's department has, because I'm sure it will make their job so much easier. But as I was in the lobby, I could not help but notice the bronze cast with everyone's name on it, all the commissioners' names on it. So I'm asking you, what would be the harm in honoring one of Alexander County's fallen officers? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Now, I'll get to the agenda. Captain Mike Harrison, if you would like to step forward, if there's nobody, anybody else that wants to make a public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. And I'll start by saying, although my name is on this proposal, I'm not speaking only for myself, but also for Chief Tony Jones of the Taylorsville Police Department, Sergeant Brian OMB of North Carolina Highway Patrol, Chief Scotty Warren of adult probation parole in Alexander County, and Sheriff Chris Bowman. We would submit that Sheriff Elisha Beber and his wife, Nell, were adding the finishing touches to their dream house in Taylorsville in 1959. They had just finished paving the carport. Mrs. Beber, who was 46 at the time, said that Mr. Beber put his initials in the cement, but he never got to live in the house that he built. Elisha Beber was 53 years old and serving his third consecutive four-year term as sheriff of Alexander County when he was shot in the back while answering a call of service to a family with a troubled son. He didn't really want to run for office that last time, Mrs. Beber stated at the time, and I begged him not to. Beber had planned to retire from office in order to run his farming operation on a full-time basis, but because he loved Alexander County and its people, Beber allowed himself to be virtually drafted into running for reelection before being chosen by the largest majority of voters in Alexander County history. Elisha Beber's popularity was such that when he was assassinated by 38-year-old Willard Ellis, emotions in Alexander County ran so high that crowds gathered at the county's jail. Deputy Sheriff Harold Price reported that Ellis had to be moved to Iredale County or he would have been killed. Joe James, now 81 years old, was the young deputy who accompanied Sheriff Beber on that fatal call. He's still affected this day by the tragedy and recalls each moment vividly. For wives, husbands, sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, and friends who must live through the pain of such loss, a law officer's glory can be difficult to bear. They pay the price for their loved ones' calling to serve their community. It is with that service and that loss in mind that we humbly and respectfully propose that the county's new law enforcement center be named in honor of the only member of Alexander County law enforcement to ever give his life in service to our community. Those who knew, loved, and suffered the loss of Sheriff Elisha Beber are no longer young. They have waited many years for Alexander County to recognize his sacrifice. For some, it did not come soon enough. Let us not fail to act in time to let surviving Beber family members know that we realize and appreciate our debt to them.
Do any of you else... Chris, do you, or Tony, or anybody else, anything you want to add?
Yes, Sir. Commissioners, if you would, we don't have to have an answer tonight, but if you would give this some serious thought, like Mike said, he's, he was the only Alexander County sheriff and/or deputy that has been killed in line of duty. And I'm behind it 100%. And like I said, if you would give some serious thought about it, you as to the board, about naming the facility, I personally would appreciate it, and I know the family would too.
Anybody else? I have a comment, then a question. We are going to take it under advisement. We hope in the near future, the very near future, to give you an answer. Who should Rick French talk to with our answer?
Me being the sheriff, I'd be happy to meet with Mr. French.
Okay, and very near future, we'll make a decision, and Rick will be in touch with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sir.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Sir.
Because I'm the backward commissioner that thinks the jail ought to be named for the people paying for it, citizens of Alexander County. And, but everything that, I'm sorry, Ms. Dagan-Hart said, I thought about that today and over the weekend and today on the way over here. Sheriff Beber, the senior sheriff Beber, didn't get to see his family grow up, he didn't get to see his grandchildren, and I got to thinking about, my dad, how much he changed from the time he got to be a grandfather. My granddaddy, my daddy, was not the same, my kid's grandfather was not the same fellow that raised me, is the best way to say it. Sheriff Beber didn't experience that, and the family didn't experience that, and that's a tragedy that can't be undone. And Sheriff Bowman and I had had a conversation about this several months ago because a deputy had triggered me to think about it a little bit then, and I had suggested that we do, in that lobby, have it set up where every sheriff is recognized, but have a special memorial for Sheriff Beber because of the sacrifice he made. And I hope we would plan it so that if it were ever needed, others could be added, and I hope we never have to add another name to it. Another thing that I thought about was the front yard of the courthouse. We have a monument there that recognizes the veteran, or those from Alexander County who served in every war. And as has been mentioned, it's been 53 years now. We need a monument there that would recognize Sheriff Beber, and hopefully, it would be my prayer that we would never have to put another name on it, but if it did, we need to be thinking about that. But I think we need to take a look at that. I think as I got to thinking about this, I went online and found a few things that I didn't know existed until you folks got me thinking. One of them is the North Carolina Department of Justice. They have, and it goes back to the 1800s, a list of every law officer, I guess, in North Carolina who has lost their lives in line of duty, and Sheriff Beber is listed there in 1959. I was, also noticed that the Blue Knights, and I believe this is a motorcycle unit, is that correct? But they have on their website an honoring system that honors officers who have given their lives, and I read through this thing, and it's got Sheriff Beber here, and I'm going to give this copy to the county manager because they have him noted as a deputy sheriff. And we'll see if we can't get that corrected because it was just a mistake that happened, and nobody's ever done anything about it. But one online, and you can pick this up, it's Officer Down Memorial Page. It also has a memorial to Thomas E. Beber, Senior. And when I saw this one, I liked it because it had his picture, and right beside it, it had Sheriff Alexander County, and I thought it was, and with, had his name, his position, and I liked the way it stated, "End of watch, Tuesday, June 2nd, 1959." And I'm going to add to your request that I think we ought to do a page on the Alexander County website, and I'm not going to say it has to be like this because I'm not that artistic, but we need to do a page that would honor, at this time, Sheriff Thomas E. Beber, Senior. And if down the road we ever needed to add, we'd have provisions for that. But I am sincerely sorry for your loss. Father, grandfather, and from Alexander County, the loss of a sheriff. And I'm sorry, when we did the pictures in the courthouse, we talked about putting up a picture of all the sheriffs to make sure we had a memorial there or a note for Sheriff Beber. And we should have, 52 years is an awful long time to wait to get something right, but I do think we need to do something that recognizes Sheriff Beber, and we will take a look at that. And I do appreciate, especially the family being here, because I have no doubt every individual in this room cares, but the family is more important than the rest of it, and we do appreciate you being here tonight.
If I may, Commissioner Robertson, if Mr. French will get up with me, and we'll be happy to, you know, continue making up what you have just said so we don't let this thing die again. I just think it'd be a real tribute, you know, to the county that we recognize the late Sheriff Beber. So I just don't want it to, you know, kind of, the next few weeks kind of die, and then nothing be done, like you said, over 50-some years. So...
Chris, like I said, we will make a decision, and we will be, Rick will be in touch with you in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks for coming. Mike?
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Does everybody want to stay for the rest of the agenda? Does anybody need to leave?
Yeah. I thought you'd never give me the chance.
Okay.
We really got some good stuff coming. I mean, hello. There's more to life.
Before I make some other nice stuff, but that's what we talked about a little bit.
Are you leaving?
No, I want to.
Seth, I'm going to get a minute more. If y'all need to discuss anything more, can you just step outside in the hallway, please? Christian Fellowship Church. Seth Harris.
Thank you very much. This is conditional use permit 13-1, requesting approval for a private church cemetery. The applicant is Christian Fellowship Church, who is also the property owner, and that church is represented by Scott Green, who was here tonight. If you have any questions for him later. It's located on Friendship Church Road. Entire lot area of all three tracks is 2.26 acres. However, the project area is .68 acres or right around 150 feet by 200 feet. Existing land use is a church, which is under construction currently. Existing zoning is RA-20, and all surrounding zonings within 100 feet is also RA-20. Land uses within 100 feet include the church mentioned before, which is under construction, the parking lot for that church, which is to the north of the proposed cemetery. To the south is vacant property, east vacant property and a manufactured home, west, single-family site-built home, and agricultural use. The subject property has frontage on Friendship Church Road, and like I said before, the project site is located at the rear of the property. Yes, thank you. I was going to say, go to the next slide, and there it is. You can see the picture there of the property. It is three separate tracks, however, the proposed cemetery site is on that. You can see it outlined there on the map. The RA-20 zoning district does allow the proposed use with conditional approval by the Board of Commissioners. Our zoning ordinance does state that cemeteries must be located at a minimum of 30 feet from any property line. North Carolina environmental health regulations require a 50-foot setback radius from springs and wells, as well as a 15-foot setback from any sanitary sewage system. And there is a letter in your packet there from Bert Gibson, which you've seen before recently. In addition, the NC Cemetery Commission recommends that a survey description be created for the cemetery site. Per our usual practice, letters were sent by first-class mail to all property owners within 100 feet. A sign was posted on the property, and a legal ad was placed in the Taylorsville Times. We actually have received two calls concerning the request. One was asking for information, and the second call came from Fred and Phyllis Little, who live across the road. Go to the next slide, Chad, or go back one. Go back again, one more time. There, you see Little's across the road from the subject property. They are in favor of the request being approved. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions: maintain the existing vegetation for screening. Burial plot shall be, duh, shall be setback 50 feet, measured regularly, from any spring or well. Burial plot shall be setback 15 feet from any sanitary sewage system, and a 30-foot setback be maintained from all property lines. Go to the next slide. You can kind of see on that slide where the parking lot's going to be, the church sanctuary, and then the cemetery at the back of the property. Next slide. Next slide. This is looking at the rear of the church that's under construction again. Back behind the bulldozers there is where the cemetery's going to go. You can see there is some existing vegetation back there that will be maintained for some screening. Next slide. This is looking from where I was just standing, back towards the road. You can see the church to the left, proposed parking lot in front of the church, and then the road is at the far right-hand side of the picture. And the last slide... This is looking from where I was just standing, back towards the road. You can see the church to the left, proposed parking lot in front of the church. And then the road is at the far right-hand side of the picture. And the last slide is looking back towards the church. Behind this is where the cemetery is. This is looking from Friendship Church Road South. Any questions or comments?
See, uh, in the packet we got, there's stuff about wells and public wells and so on. Is the church gonna be served by a well or is it community well or county system?
Maybe Mr. Green can answer that question for us. There is public water available on Friendship Church Road. Okay, so public water.
Alright, so need to clear that up. There's no need, this doesn't matter at all. What about the septic system? Is it in the way of the cemetery at all?
Okay, okay.
Need to, on the plot also.
Okay.
Uh, did you make them aware that North Carolina general statutes have requirements for cemeteries that are created since nineteen seventy-something or other?
I have mentioned it to them and mentioned that maybe they should consult with an attorney to see what requirements are needed there. We mentioned that when Mr. Green applied for the conditional use.
And since it is a church, I'm not sure that there's, uh, a requirement. But, uh, it's one of those things that you need to check before you say, uh-oh, I wish we knew that. And I had a copy of it. I don't know if I gave them to Seth or what, but you, you need to check that because, uh, if there's any i's to be dotted or t's to be crossed, now'd be the time to do it.
Yeah, I think you'd mentioned that in the previous.
Yeah. Those are the only comments or questions I had, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a, a motion, uh, to?
Public comment.
Well, public comment. Is there any comment? Is there a motion to approve this conditional use permit?
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move to close public comment.
Second.
Now, let's try again.
All those in favor?
Vote on it.
Is there a motion?
You gotta vote on closing public comment first.
Let's vote on closing pub, public comment. All in favor, say, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. Now make a motion to approve the conditional use permit. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit. Uh, I would ask that our zoning indicate that, uh, change it to indicate that the facility will be on public water. And also on the, uh, uh, sketch that they add the location of, of the, uh, septic system. And that can be, uh, from the environmental health and just attached to it. That'd be easier than the other way, since those questions were brought up.
Second.
And I approve those conditions. All in favor of the, uh, conditional use permit, raise your right hand. Opposed? Passes. You can tell it's my first meeting. I get right one of them.
You do it better, you're, you're doing better than I did in my first meeting, so. It's not as, not as easy as it looks, isn't it?
Well, you just have to kinda know what you're doing. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the two thousand twelve State of the County Health Report. Leanne Wissand, uh, Health Department Director. Leanne?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to, um, bring the county's health report to you. As many of you know, annually, the Health Department is tasked with looking at, um, the issues that affect the health of our community. Um, and every four years, we do a, um, more detailed community health assessment. This year was just the State of the County's Health Report. Um, beautiful county opening slide. Um, just to remind you, and I'm gonna give you a very brief overview. Um, the actual entire document is available and I'll show you in a minute where you can find that. And I would be happy to provide that if anybody doesn't have the access through the technology. But reminding you services we offer, can't miss an opportunity to tell everyone that your Health Department is there for the entire community. I think a lot of people just think we're there for the uninsured, but we're not. We're there for everyone. Um, last year, we served three hundred and twenty-five clients in the home health program and over sixteen hundred children and teens in our dental program. So, um, we're very active in there. Many other programs, we won't go into great detail. But, um, if you haven't had your flu shot, we still have them and available. And yes, I'm a proponent of the flu vaccine, um, among other immunizations. It has been a pretty rough flu season, so, um, remember to do good hand washing also. Lots of, um, stomach bugs and things out and about. Um, on the next slide, you'll see our leading causes of death. Not great changes in this, nothing really to point out to you. Um, the largest color to your left at twenty-six percent is really kind of a catch-all. Anything that doesn't fit anywhere else goes there. Um, actually, the twenty-one percent cancer, heart disease, respiratory are the areas that, um, are more focused for us. Um, still lots of death from flu and pneumonias. Definitely, um, a season that we're worried about. I wanted to take a moment just to talk about, um...
Can I ask you just a question? Cause I, I'm having a hard time discerning the colors.
The colors are hard, yes.
Uh, motor vehicle injuries, is that three percent?
Three percent.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and on the next slide, you'll see, not to be morbid, but I think, folks, things, um, that are in the report that don't really jump at you. I think our community, we, we like to think we're really sheltered and there's not lots of the diseases out there that really affect other areas of our country. And that's really not the case. So I wanted to take the opportunity to remind people that, um, you know, we have to be smart and protect ourselves. The, we actually had, um, combined HIV and AIDS. We have thirty-three cases, um, fifteen cases of AIDS. And we ranked fifty-one in North Carolina, which is, to me, alarming. One case is too many. And as you see, um, from two thousand seven over to eleven, we've, not huge numbers, but we've seen an increase. So we definitely wanna work on that and, um...
Is that, is that, Leanne, sorry to interrupt you.
No, no.
Is that, is that ranking per capita or is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. No, I, very informal. Um, you know, not great numbers. We saw four new cases in two thousand eleven. We're always, you know, statistics are always a little behind. Um, but you know, with something that's preventable, we need to educate the public and talk about it, you know, and, and let people be aware of what the concerns are. And, um, we don't want more cases next year and two thousand thirteen, so. Um, and you'll see the same thing with, um, the next slide for sexually transmitted diseases. We, we're, two thousand and nine was a, was higher for chlamydia, but still, we saw an increase. An increase is not what we want. We wanna see all those go down. Zero would be nice. So, you know, um, very preventable things that are out in our community. Um, my point here is to educate and remind the public that we aren't isolated. Um, you know, I'd like to stop 'em all at the bridge. Uh, haven't figured out how to do that yet, but, um...
I'm just have a question.
Sure.
Uh, where you get these statistics from what comes into the Health Department?
No, actually, these diseases are reportable from all of our, um, medical providers, our local physicians and hospitals, urgent cares. Now, there's not, I'm sure there's not a hundred percent reported, but these statistics come from all over. They go back to your county of residence. Good question, though.
I just wondered.
Yeah, if, if you're, if, if this happens to be a college student that's, um, going to an infirmary, that gets reported back to where they're residing. So those are...
Thank you.
Local statistics. No, good question. Um, and, you know, enough for the dreary. The, the areas that we are focusing on, we, we have to narrow. There's a lot of areas that we need to have an impact, but we pick the areas that we feel like we can save lives and improve the health outcomes. And those are three areas of focus for the next year. We reevaluate every year. The first one is healthy families. And within that, we're looking at a lot of those heart disease things. How can we make our families healthier? We've seen our childhood obesity numbers going up. Um, a lot of focus on helping from, a lot, we have lots of partners. The Health Department is certainly not doing this by ourselves. We have lots of committees, we're own committees, the Partnership for Children, the Ag Extension Group. I mean, there's, I could name lots of groups helping. But we're trying to educate, work with the school system so that our children, um, have better diets and are more active. Um, you know, this was the first generation that doesn't, isn't expected to outlive their parents. So we've got to turn that around. Um, and there's lots of areas, trying to increase the fresh fruits and vegetables and teach our children and all of us. We can all eat and exercise and, and live healthier. Mental health and substance abuse, you've heard a lot in the past about our prescription drug abuse issues. And so we're tackling that with a lot of education. The new detention center's gonna have a, uh, prescription, a box that you can drop off, those unused and out-of-date, um, prescription medications to get them out of your home so they're not, you know, a child doesn't accidentally take them or they don't go to, um, a teen for those Skittle parties that I know I've scared you about before. But trying to educate parents and our community to be responsible with our prescription medications. Um, and thirdly, access to healthcare. We need, um, again, you know, a lot of these are reoccurring issues. We do not have enough healthcare providers. There's limited access to healthcare if someone is uninsured, low income, if you need weekend care. We haven't been able to be very successful, but we are still working on it. We did recently get a Blue Cross and Blue Shield grant and purchased a brand-new ultrasound machine that is wonderful because it's letting us provide prenatal care, state-of-the-art technology. And folks don't have to leave the county to, to have that ultrasound done. We had, um, a donated machine at that, that the Health Department had, um, that had seemed better years. So we, we keep making tiny baby steps. You know, our dental clinic, um, certainly helped with access to dental care, but we've still got, um, work to do.
Leanne, can I ask you a couple, maybe a question and a comment?
Sure.
Something you just said, I'll use the comment first, that this is the first generation that's not expected to outlive their parents. Is that because of childhood obesity?
Yes.
Lifestyle?
Yes.
Lack of exercise?
We, we're seeing our children have more heart disease, more high cholesterol, hi- hypertension. Um, some of our children have high blood pressure when they're, you know, in elementary school. That's shocking and scary. Um, but we can intervene, you know, that's very, um, lots of things we can do to make a difference.
Well, and the second is, I guess, a question. And you don't have to name them all, but just kinda highlight what types of education programs are you gonna do in the schools and the community and so forth?
You know, the school system has actually been working on this for, before even some of the statistics came out. You know, this school food program has been working on this for years to, you know, bake more food, uh, lower the fat content. Um, and it's kinda been a struggle. It's, it's hard when you're used to whole meal, to go to skim meal. But, you know, changes like that, they've already been impacting. They're working diligently to, you know, educate our students about eating better, you know, the, um, even exercise. They're trying to incorporate more and more physical activity. We're working, the county, U-Four, to ha- add parks and recreational opportunities in all areas of the community, getting our kids up. You know, we went to a generation that likes to do video games and said, and we're, we're much more sedentary. Our kids are much more sedentary than, than twenty, thirty years ago. So just to educate parents, um, the Partnership for Children is working, there's a huge committee and subcommittees within that, that, um, they're working on a new website to provide parents with, you know, where are all the parks and activity opportunities, recipes, um, how to cook foods. Some, some new, not new, but different vegetables, if you don't know how to prepare that, you're probably not gonna be as apt to try it. Increasing the visibility and access to farmer's markets, locally grown foods. The school system's already been utilizing more locally grown foods, um, for the cafeteria. So there's lots of work being done.
My father had a very simple recipe for, uh, being sedentary or non-sedentary. If we were watching television and he said, "You boys get out of the house and don't come back in till supper time." And so that, uh, and there was no appeal to the Supreme Court after that either. So we had to stay outside and play, which needs to be done. Must say my father needs to do it cause he's not here, but a lot more of that. The parents need to take control of their children to make them more active.
Can I ask a question? In, in here, it says that you, there has been, uh, the agency has used grant funds to assist Third Creek Baptist Church in development of a walking trail for Stone Point Community. And how did it get to Stone Point? And I don't know where it's at. I mean, this is next door to me.
Mm-hmm. We actually, um, you know, are always looking for grant opportunities. And that was a, um, Heart Association grant, mini-grant opportunity. And we, so we sent it out to churches and all kinds of different organizations. And they applied and received the grant and they put in a walking trail at their church.
Okay, well, I...
And it's open to the community and the public and... And that's part of what the, um, Partnership Committee, um, we call a nutrition committee, is working on too. On that website is to do a, a listing of where all the activity, you know, exercise opportunities are. Um, every, I mean, I hear of a new one and I pride myself on trying to stay in the know. Um, but it is hard to get that information out to everybody. So, um, we're working on some kinda listing, um, where you really can't find out what's in your community.
That's just good that you have it because there's plenty of people, excuse me, that know where this is down there. See, it's not on a main road, it's on a dead end road.
Yes.
And I'm sure those people are using it.
Uh, one other question, do you have a question to?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, you mentioned something about you have a, a newer ultrasound machine. Uh, if I were the insurance that I have via my former employer, would that be an in-network if I came to the Health Department or out of network?
We're, really, we're just able to do ultrasounds for our prenatal clinic.
Okay.
We have, um, a, a working agreement with Davis Hospital to send us, um, radiology technician like twice a month. So, again, we're still limited.
Okay.
Helps those prenatal patients, but not everybody. Sorry.
What if you had a kid, thought you had a kid?
Well, they'd be overrun.
Leanne, in your report, I noticed that, uh, you mentioned that, uh, Alexander County children, ages two to four, uh, seventeen point five percent are overweight, sixteen point two percent are obese. That's thirty-three point seven percent. And over the weekend, I read that in the last twenty years, uh, adults overweight and obesity has increased twenty percent. Uh, roughly two-thirds of adults are overweight or obese. And, uh, we need to be aware of that because we talk about, you know, what, what healthcare costs and all this. But, uh, I had started, uh, cause of some problems I had in my back and so on, trying to figure out what I could do to be better. I've got four months to get my stuff straightened out because it breaks everything down. Of course, men and women and then, uh, children, adolescents. Adults are eighteen to sixty-four and then overadults are over sixty-five. So when I get to the overadult, it doesn't matter what I do, there's something gonna break. But, uh, we need to be aware of, of little things. Uh, Judy's talking about a walking trail. Uh, if you can walk, uh, thirty minutes, two or three times a day, whatever you can do, it helps. And while, uh, I wanna mention because, uh, the site visitors report, which is included, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but there were some things that I went through that, uh, you and your department, uh, get a pat on the back for because, uh, of the things that you're doing. Uh, the SVT was impressed with a variety of core public health programs offered to county residents. The department fills a key niche in the, in a county with limited access to metal, medical care. The department is commended for providing valuable dental services to children. They have successfully marketed and promoted its home healthcare services. The department is commended for their collaboration with the sheriff's office and developing a medication drop-off program to remove unwanted and possibly dangerous prescription drugs. The county is very progressive, the county has a very progressive wellness program for its employees. It mentions environmental health. Co-locating environmental health with building inspections and planning has assisted county residents in accessing these services. The environmental health section is maintained one, has maintained one hundred percent completion of food and lodging inspections. While environmental health is separated from the rest of the department physically, it is apparent they remain closely integrated with other sections, which, uh, that's good. Uh, the department has worked out a cooperative arrangement, uh, for translation services with DSS, uh, wherein the translator is... with DSS, uh, wherein the translator is a DSS employee. Uh, the Health Director and Management Staff is commended for thinking strategically about which programs the Health Department should be offering. You did good. The Nursing Director is commended for her competence in many varied fields and for her excellent work at the, as the accreditation coordinator. And, uh, this is a state review, and, uh, I understand your board, uh, some of your board was there and so on, and, uh, I wanna congratulate and thank you, uh, for your leadership in the department. I wanna thank your staff for the things they do, and it appears after just a few short years, Clint Kennedy's getting the hang of being a member of your board. And, uh, tell Clint we appreciate what he's doing too.
Certainly will, and thank you for those kind words. Um, a full copy of this report is available on the website, and if someone needs or would like a copy, we'd be certainly, um, willing to provide it. And as you, um, wonderfully segued in the next little piece, I did want to celebrate our accreditation. December fourteenth of twenty twelve, we did get fully accredited, and my little presentation will not give you a sense of how much work it really was, but, um, the, I am very proud of the Health Department staff. Um, they worked really hard. It is legislatively mandated, so we did not have a choice if we were gonna continue to be a health department. Um, but we actually, um, on the next slide, you'll see that there, the accreditation has forty-one benchmarks, a hundred and forty-eight activities. Hundred and forty-eight sounds bad, but some of those within the one of the hundred and forty-eight can be fifteen or twenty things you have to have done to have met that, so it was definitely challenging, but, um, you'll see we scored ninety-nine point three percent. So I am very proud of the staff, um, that burned the midnight candle for, uh, over a year. Um, many, many hours went into this, but we, we scored a hundred and forty-seven out of the hundred and forty-eight activities. We only missed one.
What was it?
It was actually due to space, um, and I know we are not the only people that is limited in outer space, but, um, the only way to hu- have fixed that, it's, it was related to, um, patient privacy, and we are really out of space, and so it's hard to provide the privacy in the waiting areas that the patients really need, so, um, you know, we'd be happy to take an expansion or a new building anytime you'd like to provide that. We're patient, we can wait a, you know, year or so.
You wanted some money to do that.
I'm still looking for those grants, always looking for opportunities.
Don't worry about it. Leanne, that was so nitpicking. If we had've done that, they'd've found something else, so it's all right to have one thing go wrong.
I'm, you know, we have to do this every three years, so I'm thinking by three years we can affix this, right?
Yeah, Rick, Rick is the man over there.
Can't, can't hurt to try, and your county manager was an interview and did a wonderful job. Um, they were very impressed with a small county, and, um, when I actually went to Raleigh, you feel like you're in court, you go to Raleigh to defend your case after, we had five surveyors here for three days, and then you go to Raleigh to, you know, defend if there's something you think was unfair. Um, of course, we didn't have to defend much, we were very proud, but, um, you know, one of the questions asked was, "How do you do so much with, you know, not a tremendous amount of, of county tax dollars going to it?" And so we, uh, my answer was, "We are very frugal with what we have," so, um, and we appreciate all the support that you give us. Um, it's a wonderful county to, to be the Public Health Department, and, uh, all my staff deserves lots of praise, and thank you for that, Commissioner Robertson. They work really hard.
Well, we appreciate what you do to lead the department, 'cause it takes good leadership to make the department work.
And Leanne, if we're happy, you should be happy.
I am very happy. Now, if we can just get our community healthier, we'll-
Right.
We'll work on that.
You've got some-
We can work on that together.
You've got some good pictures on the cover of your report, uh, Rocky Face, uh, Lake Hickory, and, uh, there's a lot of activities that can take place on Lake Hickory, swimming and boating and canoeing and kayaking and, uh, of course, eating the right food.
An apple a day keeps the doctor away, right?
Exactly right. So it makes a great statement, just the, the cover of your report.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
And before you leave, of course, Cindy's here, our Health Department and our DSS, DSS Department both, uh, the people in those two departments, uh, make 'em work. Now, we have two excellent leaders, uh, in those departments, but, uh, thank your staff for what they do.
Thank you.
Leanne, before you walk away, let me just ask you one, one more question before I forget to ask. Uh, the flu season is here, you and I had talked about, and I took, uh, we took in getting the whooping cough vaccination.
Mm.
Uh, do we have good supplies of the vaccines that we need if people decide that they wanna get the flu shot, uh, the-
We do. We, we ran low at one point, and we were out for a couple of days only, and we have plenty now. Would love to vaccinate those that haven't, 'cause it has been a really early season, and we're afraid that it may continue to be difficult, so please come, we'd be happy to vaccinate. The state actually, um, gave us the state supply, and so there's not a charge if we have folks that, um, are uninsured or financially, um, difficult areas, we have vaccines, so come on to the Health Department.
You got plenty of needles.
Yes.
Okay. I just wondered if you're still using that same one?
Brand, I just started to say, and brand-new ones, we don't reuse.
Talk for a minute, though, just if you would.
We don't autoclave, we don't clean them, you know?
Use the same one on him all the time, and-
And a big one.
And I'll help you give it to him too. Uh, talk for a minute just about the tetanus dip theory of whooping cough vaccination and why it's necessary today.
We've had, we've had good success, we've had a lot of people partake of the, um, DTAP. Adults are probably, um, our immunity is waning for the pertussis or whooping cough, and, you know, generally, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be very challenging to an adult, you're gonna feel bad and you're gonna have a persistent cough, but the people we worry about are infants, so we're really trying to make sure pregnant women, or if people are thinking about have, starting a family, or if you're expecting a child, a grandchild, great-grandchild, you really need to come by and get a tetanus booster that has the pertussis in it, because those infants, before they've been vaccinated, are the ones that can die from whooping cough. So we, and we have, we have that available, there's no charge for that either, so.
And Leanne, there's some people out there that, um, I think are misguided, um, as far as believing that, uh, vaccinations can cause, uh, autism, different things in children. Can you speak to that just, uh, for a minute?
Yes. Um, you know, there's lots of, um, fears about being vaccinated, and I certainly understand those, and, you know, we have seen a rise in autism. No statistics proving that that's the case. Um, I, you know, I'm a huge proponent of vaccinations. If we can have a vaccine that'll prevent children from dying and adults from being hospitalized, um, I'm all for that. I don't feel like vaccinations are, are the cause for those autistic children. I hope we can figure out what is causing it and certainly stop that because it is devastating to families. Um, and, you know, a lot of people think they don't really have to get a tetanus shot until they have an injury or they step on something, they step on a nail, but that's actually not the case. We really need a tetanus vaccine every ten years, and then you're protected. When you go, hopefully you don't have an injury, but if you have an injury and you've been vaccinated, um, the vaccine that you generally get at the hospital is different than what we give at the Health Department. We give, um, a long-acting vaccine that gives you ten years of protection. What you get at the hospital is something that helps you immediately, but only for about thirty days. So if you come to the Health Department, get your tetanus, you're good for ten years, because if you go to the ER and get it after an injury, you're probably still gonna need to come to the Health Department and get another shot, so instead of getting two, let's go ahead and just get one.
It was very painless.
I have great staff. They get a lot of practice too. That helps.
But thanks again for the job you did.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Bi-Local Alexander County Campaign, uh, presentation by Gary Herman, Alexander County Small Business Development Coordinator.
Yes, Miss-
And I did see the, uh, Facebook presentation on Maze Meets, by the way.
You did, okay, I hope you liked it.
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay, it's a good start, we'll get better as we go. But thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing me to be here tonight. Uh, Bi-Local is something that's close to my heart. I was born and raised here in Alexander County, and, um, glad to be back working here for the county and, uh, hope to do some good things and get some more sales tax revenues back here for the county and for our schools and for our citizens, uh, just, we wanna spread the good word. So Bi-Local, Alexander County. Uh, this initiative was actually started by the Citizens for the Future of Alexander County, um, who, they sent out some, um, flyers and the tax bills, I believe. Um, I began work in October first of this, uh, previous year, so, um, I kinda hit the ground running with the Bi-Local campaign, so I appreciate their efforts, uh, previously. Uh, the main purpose of the Bi-Local campaign is to create an awareness and a mindset in our people, and we want to also attract visitors to this county, um, have people to think, "If you can buy it here, why would you wanna go to another county and give them our sales tax dollars?" My wife and kids, they get on me all the time because I'm constantly saying, "Well, where are we going to eat?" Or, "Where are we going shopping?" And they think, "Well, we're not gonna get to go anywhere fun, 'cause daddy's gonna wanna shop local." But, uh, we can do some fun things around here, and we can help our county and our schools at the same time. Uh, of course, the reason to shop here is sales tax revenues and helping our business owners. Those folks have invested their time and their money and, um, all their talents here in Alexander County, and it's the least we can do, uh, to, uh, give them our business. Uh, we'll say back in, uh, fiscal year twenty-eleven, twelve, uh, the county received approximately five million dollars in sales tax revenues. That's the equivalent of sixteen percent of our general fund revenues. So, uh, sales tax revenues mean a whole lot to this county. Of the five million dollars, one, uh, one point four million was appropriated for construction and debt service payments to the school system. And, um, just for the information of, of you, uh, you probably know, but maybe the audience, uh, in Alexander County, the sales and use tax rate for non-food items is seven percent, and the county and the schools get two and a quarter percent of that. Next slide, uh, components of the Bi-Local campaign. Of course, we've mentioned the mailing. Uh, we've developed, uh, the Bi-Local Alexander County logo and flyer that we're distributing to the businesses when we visit them as part of the Small Business Development Coordinator duties. We've also revamped the EDC website to include some original content for the Bi-Local campaign. Uh, we're developing business listings in conjunction with the GIS Department, uh, which are downloadable PDFs where people can have, um, a, a listing either on their computer or in their hand that has business name, business type, address, phone number. It, it makes it easy for people to shop locally. Um, advertising, we are doing some traditional advertising in the Taylorville Times. Social media, uh, we're really, uh, hitting that pretty hard right now because it's free, and, uh, we like free. So, uh, people, and you really can get the, uh, enthusiasts out there who like Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, they can hit these sites and, um, and learn more about what we're talking about. And our newest component is business, business spotlight videos. We'll go into those things in a little more detail as we go. Next slide, please, Chad. On the left there is an example of the advertisement, uh, that we ran for the holiday season or the Christmas season here in Alexander County in the Taylorville Times. On the right is an example of a business listing of the restaurants in Alexander County. Next slide. These are some screenshots of our social media sites. On the left, you'll see the Facebook page, uh, we're now up to two hundred and seventy-two likes on our page, and almost every post gets comments and, and likes and, uh, just some real good feedback from, from our, uh, fans on those pages. Our Twitter page, we've got, we're up to seventy-two followers in just three months, and we actually, uh, as Chairman Jennings said, the, uh, Bi-Local Maze Meets video, we have sixty-eight views on the EDC YouTube site and sixty-six views on the county YouTube site, plus whatever they've seen on the, um, uh, Facebook page where it's embedded. So, next slide. Um, as we mentioned, the business spotlight videos, uh, of course, they are being shown on the government channel, which is Charter Channel Three, so we encourage everyone to watch that channel, which Chad Ritchie does a wonderful job with that. And, uh, so we are talking about the business spotlight videos, that is our most recent initiative, and we're having fun with that and, uh, trying to get some more lined up. First three sessions were recorded at Maze Meets, People's Drug Store, and Antiques and Pond, and right now, we're just taking, as folks call us and ask us to be spotlighted, we're glad to do it. So, uh, we are asking for folks to give us a call or give us some, um, tips or hints or whatever, um, of who would like to be spotlighted in our videos. And I would like to show you approximately a two-minute video from our Maze Meets, uh, interview. Next slide, Chad. Hello, I'm Gary Herman with the Alexander County Economic Development Corporation, and we're working on our Bi-Local campaign. I'm visiting with Jimmy and Mike Maze of Maze Meets here in Taylorsville. They're located at five forty-one East Main Avenue, and I invite you to come in and see what all they have to offer.
Maze Meets opened up in nineteen seventy-six, August second of seventy-six, that was opening day. Our dad, Wayne Maze, started the business.
Approximately, how many employees do you have, Jimmy?
We employ around fifty-five employees right now. Uh, it's kind of a long, a, a big step from, uh, four when it was started out, but, uh, we, uh, we keep, we keep growing.
But tell our viewers a little bit more about what Maze Meets provides.
Well, Gary, uh, we, uh, have a wholesale, uh, uh, business that we do distribute to restaurants and, uh, you know, the Hispanics, the, uh, ethnic, uh, type, uh, and they all, just a good old all-American restaurant, too. Uh, and, you know, our, we have our retail sales, which, uh, uh, we have, generate a lot of, uh, traffic that comes in here. It's, it really surprises us how much business that we've had, uh, that, that comes in, and we appreciate, um, the local support, and, and we also get a lot of support from out of the county.
But I'd like to thank the county and, and surrounding counties for all the support you gave us, you know, we tried to put out a, a, a good product, wholesome product, uh, with, uh, quality and price in line. It would just like to say, you know, we do appreciate the business.
And here in Alexander County, we do appreciate your business, uh, as, as Maze Meets. You do an excellent job, you employ people, and you provide a much-needed service to our citizens and to our community. And please bear in mind, that was my first one, so, uh, hopefully it'll get better.
You're doing better than I did.
I've done a little bit in the past in previous employment, but, uh, this is, uh, this is new to me, so, like, again, I do appreciate Chad Ritchie with the IT Department, he's, uh, the videographer and, uh, creative spirit, so, um, but again, we'd like to issue a call to our local businesses if you'd like to be on the spotlight, to contact me at the EDC office at six-three-two-eleven-sixty-one, and, uh, we'll take any questions you may have, but we've, we've enjoyed, uh, working on the Bi-Local campaign and, uh, hope that this is something that's not just a flash in the pan, so to speak, but this is something we can do for years to come to continue to create that mindset of buying locally.
Gary, are you waiting for the telephone to ring, or are you calling businesses to say, "We want to record you"?
Currently, uh, we have filmed the, the three that are gonna be on the government channel in January. Um, I have had two referrals, and right now, I'm trying to line up some businesses for Wednesday to get them on, so, uh, it's not gonna be exactly weekly, but probably looking in maybe, I don't know, thirty or forty a year, something like that. But we think it's a, a good, it's a nice thing to do for these businesses, and, um, we, we think they like them.
Well, I can give you personal, uh, testimony of the quality of meat at Maze Meets, but also I can tell you that a friend of mine has a son that's in the military, and I sent some country ham, uh, with a care package to him to Afghanistan, and he really appreciated. Unfortunately, the Afghanistan people would not cook the country ham, but cooked in the shell, because it was cloven feet, so he had to buy a hot plate, but he did manage to cook the country ham, so it did go all the way to Afghanistan.
Where there's a wheel, there's a way.
Yeah.
Great.
It's good grill. Gary, I think you're doing a good job. Now, when, when these, uh, videos you got, uh, they will be accessible after you put others on, or?
Yes, sir. Uh, I would say they'll prob- I mean, we're still on the early development stage, but I would think that they'll probably run concurrently, uh, to some degree with the newer one running more often on the government channel. They'll all- more often on the government channel, they'll always be available on our YouTube sites. So, and if this is something that the business itself wants a copy of to put on their website, you know, we can certainly do that as well.
Are you linking these also to the county website?
Back to the original county website?
Yes.
I'm not sure, I'd have to check on that, but we, I'm sure we could.
Maybe something you want to consider, because people are looking at that website, you could have the Buy Local link there and they could see those videos.
That would, that would be a good idea, to have a Buy Local link on the county website, we'll look into that, thank you.
Well, one purchase that I needed to make at Christmas was a computer. And there's not any place in Alexander County you can buy one, is there?
I know you can get one at Walmart, for sure, Radio Shack may have some, I'm not sure. I know, I probably did about $1,000 in Christmas shopping this year, what's that, Judy?
There wasn't a big enough choice for them, I guess.
Well, that's possible.
Walmart.
I mean, you know, and sometimes you just can't get what you need, sometimes, but probably 90% of the time, you can get it here in Alexander County. And just, you know, think about who you're benefiting, do you want your money to go to Kataba, Iredal, you know, Caldwell? We want to go here, so. We're proud to be a part of this initiative and thankful for everyone's assistance with this, and thank you for your support.
All right, thank you, Gary.
Okay.
Great job.
Thank you.
Gary, if you would, keep up with how much sales tax goes up next year, because we'll give you credit for part of it.
That doesn't necessarily mean a raise.
Credit, that did not mean money.
Right, right. Next item on the agenda is, folks at home that are listening, or folks that are here or watching on TV, we had originally had a work session scheduled on January 21st, we changed that to January 22nd, and now we've moved that to January 28th. And it will be a, also a commission meeting followed by a work session. So if you want to put it on your calendar, we will have another county commission meeting on January 28th, and a work session following the county commission meeting.
Move to change the January 21st meeting to January 28th.
I second it.
All in favor? opposed, passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And that meeting will be held at the County Administration Building?
Yes, I forgot to mention that, it will be at the County Administration Building, but that'd be downstairs in the conference room downstairs?
Yes, sir.
It will not be in this room, and most of you are aware that there is a conference room in the basement of the County Administration Building. Item seven on the agenda is the sales tax report from County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess it's a nice link from Gary's report. Our sales taxes for four months into this fiscal year, we have collected $1,211,019, or about 33.5% of our budget. We've collected $570,841 of Article 39. With Article 40, we've collected $512,740, and of Article 46, $124,685. So again, that's $1,211,019 as compared to last year, the same time for four months, $1,163,418. See, Gary's already part at work there, thank you, Gary. That's $47,601 more, or a little over 4%, 4.09%. That's the good news, the bad news is, is $45,442 had to go towards hold harmless, the amount that we have to set aside for the school, so, but at least we're ahead and running ahead with the sales tax, but for four months, we're at least ahead of where we're supposed to be.
That wasn't Gary, I bought a lawnmower in August.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner Meeks, for that contribution.
And it was a nice one.
Does that made up the difference, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, could be.
Mr. French, is that it as far as sales tax report?
Yes, sir.
Item number eight on the agenda is board appointments and reappointments, County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning and zoning commission appoint Sam Davis for three years, reappoint Coy Reese for two years. We have a number of nominees for the library board of trustees, we have five appointments, we'll make those at the January 28th meeting. For the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, appoint Melissa Ledbetter, Smoky Mountain Center, replacing Joe Rochelle, whose term expires January 2014. The senior center advisory committee, appoint Judith Rayo, replacing Jenny Masters, who term expires August of 2014. And we need to make some appointments to the Joint Nursing and Adult Care Community Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the names submitted.
I second it.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Is that what you nominated? The next item on the agenda is Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 27 through number 32. Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment number 27 is to increase insurance and bonds expense line item in the governing body department for one supplemental premium from fiscal year 2012 workman's comp audit, and two annual payment of unemployment insurance charges. Also to budget for countywide alcoholic beverage election, line item transfers will be made in the elections department budget to move funds, funds from the departmental contingency line, line to the appropriate elections expense line items as supplies are ordered, and to increase the extension service budget for Christmas parade expenses and revenues that were higher than estimated. Number 28 is to reallocate funds budget for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Department due to $2,276 reduction in funding from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, and to increase the health department budget for additional health promotion funds for healthy communities. Budget Amendment number 29 is to budget for the transition of funds from a DSS checking account to the county's central checking account. Specific revenue and expense light items in the DSS budget will be used to account for the transactions of the county's general ledger instead of using a separate DSS bank account. Budget Amendment number 30 is to increase the DSS budget for, one, additional funding allocations from the Division of Health and Human Services, and two, award of FEMA Phase 30 grant funds for emergency assistance payments for rent, mortgage, utilities. Budget Amendment number 31 is to budget for payout for accrued vacation and a 5% retirement bonus for five employees who participated in the retirement incentive offer, that was budgeted, that was in the budget. And Budget Amendment number 32 is to create a new line item to account for expenses related to white goods activities. Tracking is required to determine when the county may be eligible to begin receiving white goods disposal tax revenue. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
I'd just like to make a comment, if you go back to the expense for the Christmas parade, which was $9,400, I'd like to commend you and Lenny Rogers and all the other folks that had a hand in coordinating the Christmas parade, because if it hadn't been for the county, we would not have had a Christmas parade this year. So I just want to commend you on that.
Exactly, what was the increase for that we didn't anticipate?
Well, we had, we had more expenses with, with some of the bands and things like that, that we haven't, we never really have done this before, Commissioner, so we really weren't sure how to budget.
What's that, did you say bands?
Yes, we had three, actually, three bands there, and so we had additional expenses we weren't planning.
And Berkey, of course, recognize, I'd like to add Dwayne Colley's name to the, because Dwayne put a lot of time into that, too. And, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve these Budget Ordinance Amendments, but I want to make one comment on Amendment number 29, that is strictly an accounting process. DSS, these special funds will continue to exist, they'll be handled exactly the way they've always been handled, the funds will be kept up with, they'll be distributed exactly like they've always been, it's just a matter that they need to be handled through the county account rather than individual accounts.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the County Managers' Report. Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things to mention. One is, the next meeting of the Golden Leaf Foundation Community Assistance Initiative in Alexander County is scheduled for January 22nd here at CBCC, and this will be the fifth, fifth session. Also, Mackey Johnson, an architect, is meeting with the county staff, and we're working on the tentative plans towards probation parole pre-trial for one of the Taylor Togs, a smaller Taylor Togs building, and while we're doing that, we're also looking at the county barn property for a small metal building to be used for, as a county garage, and at the same time, we had budgeted funds for renovations at the animal shelter, and we're also looking at that at the same time, so maybe we can get a better arrangement or in price when we do this.
I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like if you'd just comment on the importance of the Golden Leaf Foundation grant in the event that we were successful, the amount of dollars associated with that.
There's, $2 million has been allocated for Alexander County since we were a Tier One county, and now in the process, we're going through the process to find out the economic development needs in the county, so there's been, this will be the fifth meeting in January, and it'll be, we're getting to the phase where we're talking about projects, and, but those projects will have to be economic development-based type projects.
So, $2 million is a lot of money, and as, as County Manager says, we are at the step five of a six-step process, and that meeting, I believe, is next week, is step five, and it has different entities from the government and the private sector discussing what is needed in the county for economic development, education, and I've been at every meeting except one, and so it's a good thing, I'm just hopeful we're successful in getting that $2 million. Any other comments from anybody?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I did want to mention one thing, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference is coming up, and I believe you are our representative there, and just wanted to comment to the public so that they would, every two years, the General Assembly, after an election, the General Assembly convenes for a long session, and this is when a lot of new legislation is proposed, and a lot of new legislation is passed, the budget, North Carolina state budget is passed. This is also the time when counties can lose out on a lot of money, they can be subject to unfunded mandates. We are going to work with other county commissioners across the state to try to make sure that that doesn't happen. There is a lot of chatter out there about shifting secondary road maintenance to the counties, that would be a big expense, we want to make sure that there's enough mental health funding, several other, we have 58 legisla, proposed legislative goals, and we'll be debating those and voting, voting on those goals at a, at a later time this month, in Raleigh, I believe, so, just wanted to point that out, we'll have more information as we get it.
Just one correction, Commissioner Yoder is the representative and not me.
Okay, okay.
And he's here, not here tonight, he had a prior commitment, conflict, was looking for him, but I didn't see him, I know you would all see him if he was here, but he's, yeah, yeah, but he's not here.
He's our, he is also the North Carolina Association County Commissioners District 13 District Director, so, he's been heavily involved in these legislative goals.
Anybody else have any other comments? Judy, Darrell? Okay, the next item of business is consent agenda, item A.
Move to approve its presenting.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We will, the next item is adjournment, a closed session, North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11, parentheses, parentheses A, 1, parentheses 1, comma 4, comma 5, and 6, to prevent disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel.
What's that section for about? Move to going to closed session.
I'll say what I had to say in closed session. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Need to vote.
Got a vote on it.
Okay, I know we don't need to have any discussion, all in favor of moving in the closed session, raise your right hand. Motion passes.